Okay, I'd like to call the Town of Wapinsor zoning board of appeals meeting for August 26, 2025 to order. Can we all please stand for the pledge? Pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the Republic of which stands one nation, God, individual liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everybody. B, may I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Delaporte?
Here.
Mr. Hernandez?
Here.
Mr. Bor?
Here.
Mr. D'Naro?
Here.
Mr. Lawrence Zinni?
Here. Thank you. Acceptance of minutes from July 22, 2025?
I'll move it. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm gonna jump right on to the public hearings. Appeal number 257853 in area variance Christina and Christian Acevedo, seeking an area variance section 24037 district regulations R20 zoning district. Where 20 feet to the side yard, right property line is required, the applicant can provide 16.8 feet for the replacement of an existing 15 by 20 deck with stairs, thus requesting variance of 3.2 feet. The property is located 15 sacks in place on 0.51 acres and is identified as tax grid number 6258-03-216078 in the town of Wapinsors. Christina and Christian?
Yes, sir.
Come on up. Good evening. How are you tonight? Can you please have your name and...
Do you want to please, sir?
Thank you. Please have your name and address for the record.
Christina Acevedo, 15 sacks in place, Wapinsors, Falls, New York.
Great. And just real, I'm sorry. Can I have a motion to open a public hearing?
Move it. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, real quick, just tell us what you need and why you need it.
We're just replacing an existing back deck and we need variance because the way our property, our house faces on the property, it edges up against the neighbor's fence. That's pretty much it.
That's pretty much it?
We just need the variance for it.
Okay, thank you. We were out there Saturday morning.
Just not much to say about it.
You know, we noticed that your lot is one of those pizza pie shaped lots that comes in pretty tight in the back, so. And this one had the slope, correct?
Yes.
It's a substantial hill, I think, in the back, right?
Yeah, yeah. We had a 12 by 12. We're going out 15 foot though, so it comes a little bit closer to the side.
No, it'll be nice to have a deck back out there, I'm sure.
Definitely gonna make our life easier.
You know, the plans for the deck, thank you very much. I mean, they look nice. Does anyone on the board have any questions? Any?
It's gonna, the deck will be even with the house on the side, yeah.
Yeah, we're just going straight out.
We looked at the lines that were drawn, so, yeah.
Spent a lot of time on that.
Anything further?
Not for me.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to step up and talk about this application? Okay. Then I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Second? And all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Now entertain a motion to either grant or deny?
I'll make a motion to grant it. There's no undesirable change to the neighborhood. It can be achieved by other means, but that's moving a whole double door and probably rearranging the inside of your house. The request is really not substantial. There was a deck there to begin with, just making it a little bigger. And it's really not self-created. Was there when you built the house, the original deck?
So, my parents purchased the house in 1997 and we bought the house from them five, three years ago. And I guess, at that time, they were under the impression there was no permit or variance for it. We found out after we tore the deck down that there was, but it had to be replaced anyway. So it was just more for safety measures, but, yeah.
Well, that's basically it.
Yes, so, you want to vote to grant it?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to grant it.
Second? May I have a roll call, please, B?
Mr. Delaporte?
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. Bor?
Yes.
Mr. D'Naro?
Yes.
Mr. Lawrence Zinni?
Yes. So it's been granted?
Okay. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
I think the town, I think the building department will be...
We'll hear from the building department in a few days. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a great night. Appeal number 257854, Joseph Gonzalez, seeking an area variance section 24037 district regulations in R20 zoning district. We're only, we're only...
Good evening.
We're only, I think it's supposed to say four feet high, right? Fence is allowed in the front yard. The applicant has erected a six-foot fence, thus requesting variance to two feet. Where no structure is allowed in the front yard, the applicant has installed a hot tub, thus requesting variance to allow for a hot tub to remain. The property is located 30 Lake Onion Drive on 0.67 acres and is identified as tax grid number 6257-01443859 in the town of Wapinsors. Good evening. Could I please have name and address for the record?
Good evening. Joseph Gonzalez, 30 Lake Onion Drive.
Right beside him.
And can I have a motion to open public hearing, please?
Move it. Second?
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Great. So, good evening. Please tell us real quick what you need and why you need it.
It's the variance of two feet and request a variance to allow for the hot tub to remain.
So we were out at the property, you saw the property, right? You went on Monday?
Yes, I did.
We were out at the property Saturday morning. Actually, you guys did a great job.
Thank you.
You got a pretty tough, pretty tough lot there right on the corner and it looks wonderful what you guys have done. So, I don't know if anyone here on the board has any questions, any concerns?
I know that it's a corner lot and, you know, the primary elevation of the house is not facing either of the, in theory, front property lines. It's more facing your driveway. And the fence that you did install, you know, it's not at the property line. It's really kind of in alignment with the house to the point where it feels more like an addition, you know, it's almost like a part of the mass of the main structure. You know, for those reasons, I have no issue with it. You know, it doesn't feel like you have a six-foot fence in front of your house. It feels like the walls of your house are just a little bit, a little bit more squared off. And this would be for, you know, there was an existing fence, I think, on the other side also, which I think we're not legalizing because that would have been pre this rule going into effect. So, you know, this, there would be no reason to, I think, lower, you know, the fence on the one side to four feet.
I think the reason we have the six-foot fence on in the front yard is for visual obstruction in this case because it's right on the house, I'm gonna say. It's not really on it, but close to the house. It doesn't obstruct vision at all, so.
Yeah, it still feels like a yard than a house, not large fence, yard, house.
Okay. Thank you.
You don't need much, right?
Yeah, and your quote-unquote backyard is really your driveway, so.
I know.
You really have no option to do something like that in the backyard, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I'd only note that, you know, the variance, if we choose to grant it, would be for the fences that are built. Like, this doesn't give you the go-ahead to build a new fence, six feet on the property line.
I don't think he wants to build anything.
Sometimes the wording of variances leads people to interpret that they could. So this is for the fence that is existing now.
For the fence existing, okay.
And only that fence, yes.
Okay.
Great. Anyone else? Is there anyone in the audience who would like to step forward and talk about this variance? Okay, can I have a motion to close the public hearing, please?
I'll make a motion.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Can I have a motion to grant or deny the applicant their variance?
I'll make a motion that we grant the variance. This benefit can be achieved by other means feasible to the applicant, but in this case, it's perfectly fine the way it is, in my opinion. It will not produce an undesirable change in the neighborhood. The request is not substantial. It will not have physical or adverse environmental effects on the neighborhood because it is, again, close to the house. It's not obtrusive in the yard. And it is self-created. I make a motion, we grant the variance.
Can I have a second, please?
Second?
May I have a roll call, please, B?
Mr. Delaporte?
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. Bor?
Yes.
Mr. D'Naro?
Yes.
Mr. Lawrence Zinni?
Yes. So it's been granted?
Thank you.
You guys are all set. I think, again, the building department will be in touch with you.
In a few days, we'll get everything done.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Have a good evening, everyone.
You too.
Thank you, guys. Have a good night. Appeal number 2578, no, that's not right. Sorry. Appeal number 257855, area variance, Christian Jessica Gaviria, seeking area variance section 24037 district regulations in an R20 zoning district. Where 20 feet to the side yard, left property line is required, the applicant can provide six feet for the legalization of a 12 by 20 shed, thus requesting a variance of 14 feet. Where 40 feet to the rear yard property line is required, the applicant can provide eight feet for the legalization of a 12 by 20 shed, thus requesting a variance of 32 feet. Where no more than two accessory structures are allowed on the property, the applicant has three structures, thus requesting a variance to allow the three structures to remain. The property is located 18 Darrell Lane on 0.42 acres and is identified as tax grid number 6257019092744 in the town of Wapinsors. Good evening, folks. Can I please have your name and address for the record, please?
Hey, good evening. It's Christian Gaviria.
Good evening. Jessica Gaviria, 18 Darrell Lane, Wapinsors Falls, New York, 125.
Thank you. Can I please have a motion to open a public hearing?
Move it. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Just real quick, tell us what you need and why you need it.
We just are requesting a variance on the shed house that we have in the property.
From, you know, I know we were out there on Saturday and we, and of course, Chris was out there on Monday. We all took a look. The three sheds were actually on the property when you bought the property, correct?
Yes.
And they were pretty much in the locations that they're in? Okay. You know, I noticed that your backyard is a little tight, so I can understand why the sheds are kind of off to the side. I mean, where they're, where they are, they're functional and they're... Does anyone on the board have any questions, any concerns?
Yeah, I mean, it's the back shed I worry the most about because there's such a substantial variance. You know, that being said, if you moved it, so it was 40 feet from the back property line, I think it would be almost dead center in your property, which is less than ideal. That back property line is fairly heavily wooded. Like, it felt very natural when we were back there. Like, it did feel like it was in the correct location, so, you know, I leaned towards granting it, you know, for that reason, you know, for the fact that it is pretty heavily screened. And if you were to move it, I mean, I think it would really disrupt, you know, any use of your backyard.
I noticed that the, of the three structures, which is one of the variances here, because as you know, there's no more than two allowed. The small one in the back, I didn't even see it back there. It kind of blended in. So, I mean, I had, oh, there it is, right there. So, it's a large, in terms of, in terms of the large shed. Next to that, it's so very small, you don't even see it. And I just, and it's, I say unobtrusive. I'm okay with keeping that.
I mean, on other properties, we've conditioned that, you know, if we grant the variance, it's for the current structures. And any new structures would, would, you know, require to basically be filed again. And, you know, the variance would no longer be affecting it. Like, a new shed would have to either meet current zoning or get a new variance? Would we want to do that?
If that, the old shed, I don't know which would, I don't mean old, small shed, looks old.
Did it look terribly old to the point where they're gonna fall down?
I was looking in the future, that small shed to replace it with another one. I mean, I don't know when, going forward, I don't know how many years, but I was, me and her, we was thinking about that small one, old one, and we were trying to replace it with the same one that we have there, but that's not near, near close to do that.
Well, I think that's what Dave's saying, if you're gonna be making the changes.
Right.
You know, we don't want to burden you since the structures exist, but if you were to go through the process of doing new, you would need a new variance.
Right, right.
Is that something you would be okay with?
We don't, like you say, if we put it like in the middle, maybe like close to the house.
Yeah, because you can't have more than two.
If we decide to buy a new one, we have to do the variance again.
I mean, if anything, I would see that small shed next to the other one going away and the larger shed being expanded.
Right, right, right.
If it was my property.
Right. But for now, I'm just gonna keep it like that, yeah.
Understood. I mean, you know, I think, like you said, with the property, the layout, you know, with the pool in the back and everything, there's not a whole lot of room for it. So I think, and these folks, like, they bought into it. I don't know how to explain that other than they bought the house with the three sheds on there, so. Anything further from the board? Nothing? Anyone in the public would like to step forward and talk about this application? No? Can I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Can I have a motion to either grant or deny variance?
I'll move to grant the variance based on the fact that there's no undesirable change to the neighborhood. It's the way the house was bought. The benefit could be achieved by having a larger shed that encompassed more of your storage needs. The request is substantial, three buildings on the property. However, one of them is also plastic and movable. The request has no adverse physical or environmental effects, and this is not a self-created situation. The house was bought this way. So, for those reasons, I move to grant the variance.
Second? May I have a roll call, please, B?
Mr. Delaporte?
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. Bor?
Yes.
Mr. D'Naro?
Yes.
Mr. Lawrence Zinni?
Yes. So your variance has been granted. You guys are all set. I think the, will the building department be in touch with them or anything?
It's a few days.
Thank you for coming out tonight. I need a breath. Okay.
Two or four.
Appeal number 257856, area variance, Joshua Endorf, seeking area variance section 24037 district regulations in an R40 zoning district. Where 50 feet to the rear yard property line is required, the applicant can provide 16.1 feet for the legalization and maintenance of an existing 192 square foot pool shed, thus requesting a variance of 33.9 feet. The property is located 140 Old Hopewell Road on 2.6 acres and is identified as tax grid number 6157-01313530 in the town of Wapinsors. Good evening, council.
Good evening. Good evening, chairman and members of the zoning board. My name is Jessica Zalen. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Cuddy and Fader. I'm appearing tonight on behalf of the applicants, Joshua and Marlena Endorf, who are the owners of 140 Old Hopewell Road.
Can I have a motion to open the public hearing, please?
I'll make a motion.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Great. So I'm here tonight in connection with the applicant's request for variance relief to legalize their existing pool shed on their property, just to maintain the property in its current conditions. As the chair mentioned, the property is approximately 2.67 acres in area. It is located on the south side of Old Hopewell Road and it's classified in the town's R40, one-family residence zoning district. The property is currently developed with the applicant's residence as well as his associated accessory pool and pool shed. The area surrounding the property, and particularly the area surrounding the rear portions of the property on which the shed and the pool are located, is heavily wooded. It's undeveloped or largely undeveloped on three sides of the property. The fourth side of the property is the street side budding Old Hopewell Road, but the portions of the property that we're discussing tonight are not visible from the street. They're also not visible from any other surrounding properties but for the adjacent property that's owned by Mr. Endorf himself. And it's only visible from portions of that property. It's, that property is also heavily wooded. The reason we're here requesting a variance is that several years ago, the applicant's installed this pool and this pool shed. They were under the mistaken impression at the time that the appropriate setback for an accessory structure such as the pool shed would be 10 feet, so they located their pool shed 16.1 feet from the property line. And that would have been the correct setback distance for said pool shed if it were not, if it were slightly smaller than it is. The rear yard setback requirement for an accessory structure in this zoning district is 10 feet. If the structure is under 144 square feet and under 15 feet in height, this shed is 192 square feet in area. And the height, because of variations in the grading at the property, varies from 13 feet 11 inches, which would be under the height requirement, but goes up to a height of 20 feet 4 inches, again, based on the slope in that area. Because of those existing conditions and the applicant's impression at the time that he installed this shed, the pool shed is setback 16.1 feet from the lot line, and therefore, the applicant is seeking variance from the 50-foot setback requirement to maintain this existing pool shed.
Thank you. We were all out at the property Saturday morning. Property was cleaned up, looked great. The pool shed, we took a good look at that and we saw the property line. They marked that out clearly for us, so that was very nice. And, like you said, we can't see it from, you can't see it from the road. It's, you know, other than a place to sit on when you're out at the pool and a little storage underneath it, looks like a regular little pool shed to me.
Yeah, I mean, given that the most impacted property is also owned by this, you know, by this person, I mean, I see no reason to remove it. I mean.
What would happen if the property sold, though, Dave, next door? What would happen? And what would we do?
Someone would build a house and they would likely build a house so they didn't have to see the pool shed.
So far away, yeah. Actually, I don't, it didn't sound like it.
I mean, again, if anything, it would affect the sale of that property by this homeowner, owner, I would think.
And from what we understood...
It's a shared driveway.
Shared driveway and the owner was actually building the house.
The owner said he had plans for where to locate the house and it was significantly back from where this would be.
So it doesn't sound like it's gonna happen, that someone else will buy it. If they do, then mess with it then, I guess.
I mean, none of us, you know, none of us can tell what's gonna happen in the future, but I mean, we can't tell what's gonna happen today, you know.
The building is also...
And like, like the attorney said, if it was just a little bit smaller, it wouldn't even need, you know, wouldn't even need the variance, so.
The building is beautiful.
Right? I mean, worst-case scenario, one house maybe can see it, which is not built yet.
Right. The building is beautiful. It's made out of historic recycled material, which, you know, it's gorgeous.
Beautiful pool house.
It is a really nice structure. And to your point about a future sale of the adjacent property, that property owner would be on notice of the condition at the time that they purchased the property. And there would be an opportunity for both the purchaser and Mr. and Mrs. Endorf to consider screening landscaping at the time of a future sale or future development of that property.
Thank you. Anyone else on the board? Is there anyone in the public who would like to step forward and talk about this variance that's gonna happen? I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll move it.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to grant or deny the applicant their variance.
I'll make a motion to grant the variance. The benefit can be achieved by no other feasible means, short of knocking down the existing structure, which I see as an undue burden in this case, given the lack of visibility from anywhere. It's not an undesirable change to the neighborhood. Again, the neighborhood is this property. The request is substantial. There's no adverse physical or environmental effect, and the difficulty is self-created.
I'll second. Can I have a roll call, please, B?
Mr. Delaporte?
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. Bor?
Yes.
Mr. D'Naro?
Yes.
Mr. Lawrence Zinni?
Yes. So variance has been granted?
Thank you, everyone, for your time.
Thank you.
I'm pretty sure the building department will be in touch.
Couple of days.
Sure. Thank you. Oh, B, I have additional supplemental notice materials to give you before I leave.
Thank you, council.
Thank you.
Have a good night. Moving on, we have a discussion on for tonight. Appeal number 257857, area variance, Adrian and Shawna Mamwell, seeking use variance section 24037 district in R40 zoning district, of a district in an R40, where 50 feet is required to the rear yard property line, the applicant is proposing an addition on the left side and can provide 43.6, thus requesting a variance of six feet 6 inches. Where 50 feet is required to the rear yard property line, the applicant is proposing an addition on the right side and can provide 46 feet, thus requesting a variance of four feet. Where 50 feet is required on the front yard property line, the applicant is proposing 46 feet, thus requesting a variance of four feet. The property is located at 53 Gold Road and is identified as tax grid number 625804934369 in the town of Wapinsors. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. I'm Steve Whalen of Whalen Architecture. I'm representing the owners of 53 Gold Road. Just gonna bring up the drawings just for reference.
Barbara, did you guys do an inspection of this property?
No, because I just got back from vacation. I did look up. They have a permit for the house, a shed. Hold on one second. They have a permit for the house, the shedding, and repairing a chimney. I will take a visit out this week before you do a site visit and send you an inspection report.
Great.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, Mark. Go ahead, councilor, you're up. What you need and why you need it?
If you can get your computer working. No, no computers want to work here tonight.
All right, I'll just talk about it. So we're proposing three additions. One's on the left side of the house. If you're looking at the plan, that's gonna be for a new two-car garage with a master suite above it. On the right side of the house, we're proposing a new bonus room. And in the front, we're proposing a new entrance foyer. So the house is an existing non-conforming lot. The front yard and the rear yard setbacks already go through the house, so if we're gonna add on anything, we're most likely gonna need a variance. So we investigated on the left side with the garage, if we were to stay within the setback lines, we really can't get a usable garage. And the same on the right side, you know, we really can't get like a usable bonus room. And then on the front, since the front yard setback already goes through the house, any addition to the front of the house is gonna require a variance, and hence all three variances.
Okay. Thank you for all the paperwork that you sent us. Can you get it up, or can I, sorry, that sounded wrong. Can you get the, can you get the video off?
We were gonna let it go, John.
It sounded too personal. Sorry about that. Doesn't want to, okay.
I mean, I think it's clear from the drawings we have. I mean, it's a fairly complete set.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. The site plan, color-coded, I think it lays out where the additions are. I mean, that's, I don't know that we need more.
There's an issue with the flash drive. I apologize.
The proposed patio in the front, is that gonna be masonry or what is that?
Yeah, that'll be a masonry, not covered.
Okay.
And actually, I reviewed that with Barbara, just to confirm that it's not a, it's not a structure.
Because in the past, you know, if it's wood steps or anything like that, we've had to get variances for it. So it's all gonna be masonry in this.
That's correct.
Anyone else?
So what we'd like to do is come out and take a look.
Okay. Just one other comment. The proposed addition on the left, does that need a front yard variance also? It looks like it's for this dashed line. It's within the 50-foot setback. Just to make sure we have everything on the...
Sorry, B. Yes, it actually should. So we can add that to the public hearing notes.
Okay, so it'd be the rear setback and the front setback?
Rear and the front on the left and the rear on the right and the front porch.
So I don't see that to mention on the site plan, but, you know, just confirm with Barbara what that, you know, the closest corner of... You know, the closest corner of that addition on the left to the front yard.
Yeah, we can update that before the public hearing.
Correct. No, it would have to be published, otherwise you can't grant it.
We'll fix it in the morning.
Okay.
And then B can send you a new public hearing notice.
So we'd like to schedule a site visit. Come out and take a look. Is there any way that we could kind of get either chalk or, just an outline of where the additions will be on the house?
Yeah, I can contact the homeowners tomorrow and...
It's gonna be about two weeks, it's gonna be, what, a week and a half for a site visit, right?
Yes, September 6th.
September 5th?
6th.
September 6th?
Gotcha, okay. Yeah, I'll reach out to them, and we'll have at least stakes or spray paint.
They got a few weeks, yeah.
Just something to figure it out.
Kind of see when we get there, where, what they're doing. Property lines, guys, you need property lines, or? There, I mean, it's almost 50, it's so close.
I mean, since we're, we should be able to go off the existing house if they, or, you know, we just want to make sure it's accurate, right?
Gotcha.
Because if you are a foot off with where that corner's going, and you build it, then you're gonna be back here.
Mm-hmm.
So, you know, whatever has to be done to make sure that we have accurate numbers.
Gotcha, okay.
When's the public hearing, B?
October 9th.
So then, we will schedule it for public hearing on September 9th at 7 o'clock. And we'll have enough time to do everything that we need to get done.
Take care of it first thing in the morning.
Perfect. And then you come back, and we'll, you know, talk further about it then.
Okay.
Schedule for a public hearing, like I said. B's got a couple of things for you to have to go out and find, and other than that, I think we're all set, right, gentlemen?
Yes.
Excellent, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I think the reason that brought her on.
That's okay.
What is he doing there, Chris? How to consult him?
Consult works, yes.
Watch him, Chris.
Appeal number 257840, area variance Cesar Barzalo. Seeking area variance section 24037, district regulation in an R40, R20 zoning district where 35 feet to the front yard property line is required, the applicant provide 11.7 feet for a new front porch to remain, thus requesting a variance of 23.3 feet. The property is located at 15 Spook Hill Road on 1.032 acres and is identified as tax grid number 625701003924 in the town of Wapanger. I am going to move right on to reading this into the record, and when we are done, we will make a vote on it, and that'll be that. This is Town of Wapanger Zoning Board of Appeals, Application for Area Variance Findings and Decisions, Appeal number 257840. The application date, February 5th, 2025. Applicant, Cesar Barzalo. Premises is located at 15 Spook Hill Road, tax grid number 625701003924. The zoning districts are 20. The variance sought, section 24037, district regulations, where 35 feet to the front yard property line is required, the applicant provide 11.7 feet for a new front porch to remain, thus requesting a variance of 23.3 feet. Description of premises, the property is a single-family home with a detached garage on Spook Hill Road consisting of 1.032 acres. A brief history of the application, the application has a lengthy history. On December 6th, 2022, Cesar Barzalo, the applicant, submitted an application for a front yard setback. The application indicated the proposed front of the home would be 19.1 feet from the front property line, thereby requiring a variance of 15.9 feet. The ZBA reviewed the application at its meeting on December 13th, 2022, and the applicant was represented by Edwin Rodriguez, who provided details on the application. The ZBA held a public hearing on January 10th, 2023, and the applicant was again represented by Edwin Rodriguez. That evening, the ZBA reviewed the application and voted to grant the requested variance. After construction and as built survey revealed, the actual construction was 11.7 feet from the front property line. As a result, the applicant was required to amend the variance to seek relief of the additional 7.4 feet for a total variance of 23.3 feet. The applicant submitted an application for the additional relief dated July 3rd, 2024. The ZBA reviewed the application on July 23rd, 2024, and the applicant was again represented by Edwin Rodriguez. The ZBA held a public hearing on August 27th, 2024, and the applicant was again represented by Edwin Rodriguez. During the meeting, the ZBA voted to deny the variance, finding that the additional variance would change the character of the neighborhood was substantial, and there were other means feasible for the applicant to pursue other than granting of an area variance to achieve this goal, and finally, that the variance was self-created. The ZBA's decision was filed with the town clerk on September 3rd, 2024. The applicant filed an Article 78 action on October 3rd, 2024, after discussion between the applicant's then attorney, Kenneth M. Stanger Esquire, and the ZBA's attorney, Rebecca Walk. Then with the consent of all clients, the parties agreed that the ZBA would consider the matter de novo and stipulated to terminate the litigation. The applicant submitted this application on February 5th, 2025. Between that date and sometime before May 21st, 2025, the applicant changed counsel to John E. Doherty Esquire. The application was presented on May 27th, 2025, and public hearing held on June 10th, 2025. Further discussion was held in the applicant's representative on July 22nd, 2025 meeting. The evidence considered, one, application dated February 5th, 2025. Two, cover letter of John E. Doherty Esquire dated May 21st, 2025. Secra, the application is type 2 action under 6 New York CRR 617.5C17. Type 2 actions or classes of actions identified as type 2 are not subject to review under this part, except for otherwise provided in the section. These actions have been determined not to have significant impact on the environment or otherwise precluded from environmental review under environmental conservation law Article 8, 6 NYRCC 617.5A. Area variance criteria, where an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties will be created by granting the area variance. The proposed home is much closer to the street than any other home in the immediate neighborhood, where the average home is a setback approximately 40 to 50 feet, as shown on the Dutchess County parcel access. Only one home on Roberts Road appears to be closer than 35 feet to the front yard setback. The closeness to the road of the new structure is an undesirable change and is out of character with the overall street. The previous one-story structure, although also close to the road, was much less visible due to its height. However, the ZBA recognizes that the existing structure was located approximately 20 feet from the front yard setback. Further, the impact of the variance is mitigated by the large berm located on the town property in front of the home on which the applicant has planted significant landscaping, albeit without the consent of the town prior to doing so. At this time, the town and the highway superintendent have not required removal of the plantings. Whether the benefit sought by the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the area variance. This is a, this lot is a very long with 365 feet of frontage along Spook Hill Road. The applicant can have constructed a porch on the side of home that fronts Roberts Road, where there is approximately 100-plus distance between the home and the property line. However, the ZBA acknowledges that the porch has already been constructed at this time, albeit without the proper permits and approvals. Three, whether the requested area variance is substantial. The area variance needed is 23.3 feet, where 35 feet is required. In percentage, that is a reduction of 66.5%. The ZBA concerned about the precedent of such a significant variance. However, the ZBA again recognizes that the impact of the variance is mitigated by the large berm located on the town property in front of the home on which the applicant has planted significant landscaping. Four, whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on physical environment conditions in neighborhood and district. There's no evidence in the record that the front yard setback has an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood. It is relevant that the variance is considered a type 2 action under 6 NYCRR 617.5C17, granting an area variance for a single-family, two-family, or three-family residence. Type 2 actions have been determined not to have any significant impact on the environment. 6 NYCRR 617.5A. Whether the, five, whether the alleged difficulty was self-created, which consideration shall be relevant to the decision of Board of Appeals, but shall not necessarily preclude the granting of the area variance. This factor weighs the strongest against the applicant. The applicant purchased the property in April 2022, subject to existing zoning provisions. While the initial variance to essentially square off an odd-shaped home was reasonable, the applicant went far beyond the approval, and it has always been and remains incumbent upon the applicant to make sure the measurements in the field are correct. When the error of the additional porch was discovered, the applicant and his representatives exasperated the situation by blaming everyone but himself themselves for the error. This has included aggressive behavior in meetings and harassment of town employees. The simple fact is that the applicant did not abide by the variance, and correction was needed. The town maintains that the fault falls solely on the applicant. Despite the applicant's abhorrent behavior, the ZBA recognizes that the issue before whether this porch should be granted a variance. Based upon discussions above, the ZBA reluctantly finds that the benefit to the applicant of receiving the variance slightly outweighs the burden of the health, safety, and welfare to community if the variance is granted. While the variance is substantial and not characteristic with the neighborhood at all, the impact in variance is mitigated by the large berm located in town property in front of the home on which the applicant has planted significant landscaping. Conditions, one, consistent with the original variance granted on January 10th, 2023, the porch is to remain an open porch and shall not be enclosed or walled off. Two, to improve the aesthetic appearance of the entire structure, the applicant will improve the home with siding within six months of the date of the variance. The siding shall be mastic ovation and panel thickness 0.42 in the color shown on the attached image. Three, plantings landscaping shall be maintained in front of the porch for the life of the home to shield how close it is to Spook Hill Road. If at any time the town does not consent to the plantings landscaping on its property or the town widens Spook Hill Road so that the plantings are removed, then the landscaping must be installed within the 11.7 feet of the porch and the applicant's front property Excuse me. Four, the applicant has made a number of other improvements that the town maintains violate town code. The town agreed to refrain from issuing violations to allow this variance application to proceed. The applicant has consented that conditions of the variance shall be the opening in the stone wall, and the town maintains through regular observation by the highway department. Is being used as a second driveway shall be closed with a vinyl fence. This will prevent regular use of the area as an illegal second driveway, but will allow the applicant to remove the fencing if vehicular access to the lower portion of the property is needed to repair or maintain the septic system. This foregoing decision was offered by myself and is seconded by... ...who moved for its adoption. B, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Delacore?
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Uh, no.
Mr. Donato?
No.
Mr. Lawrence, in here.
So, this is the foregoing decision of the ZBA, and the matter is closed. Thank you, board members. Beatrice, you do it.
Thank you, Mr. Doherty.
Entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll move it. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.